Okay, at this time, the meeting is called to order. I would like to welcome each of you to the October the 4th, 2021 School Board Meeting of the Madison County School Board. The School Board Meeting is officially called to order. At this time, if you would please stand for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to tonight's meeting. The School Board Meeting is an advertised meeting held in the public, not a public meeting. We have a set advertised agenda that will be followed. Anyone wishing to address the School Board may do so during the public input section of the meeting. You will have three minutes to address the board. The sign-in sheet to speak during public input is on the table to the left as you enter the boardroom. Please sign if you wish to speak. Our School Board Minutes are being recorded this evening by Ms. Bishop, the Confidential Secretary and Secretary to the Superintendent. Board members present are Mr. Carroll, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Williamson, and myself, Bart Alford. Ms. Bell is remotely. Superintendent Joseph is present, Ms. Bishop is present, and Mr. Reeves, our attorney, is present. Okay, at this time, we will call the meeting to order. We have, is there any public input? I don't think there's any public input. So on to the consent item, agenda items. 4.1 was the minutes from the September the 21st, 2021 meeting. 4.2 were fundraisers. The first fundraiser is for Lee Elementary School, Johnson's Bakery, October the 27th. It's through the PTO. It's for classroom, playground, and teacher needs. The next fundraiser at Lee is their Fall Online Auction in lieu of their Fall Festival, which is, will take place November the 5th, and that too is by the PTO. And the third is the Boston Butt Sale, which will take place November the 19th, and that is given by the Sunshine Club at Lee Elementary, and that is for Staff Morale, Incentives, and Rewards. At Greenville Elementary School, they're having a Krispy Kreme fundraiser on October the 11th through October the 15th for playground equipment. So we have three fundraisers at Lee Elementary and one at Greenville Elementary School. I had spoken to Ms. Joseph concerning our policy and looking at our policy for fundraisers, and it says, and you can see it on the, on the sheet where they posted like what they would like to do. It does say on the policy that, that principals can make the decision and it doesn't have to come to the board. I think back when this started back years ago, it was due to possibly some misuse at some of the sites with people maybe doing fundraisers that were more of us not really knowing until after the fact, and it was brought about that we have more control of knowing what was taking place and that it truly was for the kids and, and looking at children's safety because at that time, we had children going from door to door, and I think at that time in the policy, it said that they can't be, but the point I'm making is our policy is different than what we're doing, and we need to make it consistent with what the policy says, I feel, or change the policy. I personally don't have an issue as long as we are made aware of what fundraisers they, they have. So if people call us asking about why are so many kids coming by my house selling something, we would know what it's for, or just as a courtesy to us, I don't know that...
They might want something.
Based upon, based upon the policy, it says that principals have that authority to make the decision and, and it would come to us. So I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but that's something to think about. If, if we're wanting to make all the decision, then we need to change the policy. So be thinking about it, and we can, we can talk about it. 4.3 is the Master In-Service Plan, and that will be all the consent items on this agenda. Is there any discussion concerning what I said about fundraisers or the policy?
I don't have a problem with the principals being able to approve the fundraisers.
We, we did that years ago, and, and again, it was, it was brought back to us at some point because of maybe something happened years ago. I can't even remember how many years.
I think there was confusion about, there were fundraisers going on that, that we weren't sure, are these school-affiliated fundraisers?
Or personal.
That GoFundMe and just different things was going on that really hadn't been approved by anybody.
Right.
I, I think if we know about them, we don't, I mean, we don't, we don't have to change nothing. I, I mean, I'd like to be able to just know that they have them. I don't necessarily have to prove it.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, am I hearing the board wants to know about the fundraisers before they happen, but we did not have to approve them? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I would just like to know as a courteous, I mean...
But would you like to know before they happen?
I think we usually do.
Well...
Okay, right now, you do, but I do have some fundraisers come up here after the fact, and I, I don't bring them to you because I can't, you can't approve or know about something after the fact.
No, if we have to be notified at a board meeting, just send an email.
No, I think you could, I think you could get, send me an email, and I'd be good.
Well, well, just so, even, even if something were to come up, because that basically would still be in that if it, if they can't have it until we hear about it, that would still be like us approving it, in essence.
Yeah, just send an email.
I mean, I, I think if the principal...
If the principal approves it, and so...
It's, it's the principal's responsibility in their school, and they're the ones that are having to deal with if they decide to have an ice cream party, or a Coke sale, or cotton candy sale. They're the ones having to deal with that, not the board, so...
So it's okay to let you know after the fact? That's what I want to clarify.
Because if not, then we're, we're basically still approving it if you wait till we see it.
So you're saying be notified after the principal approves it?
Right.
Not after the fundraiser's already over, but after the principal approves it?
Okay.
After the principal approves it.
Because some of these fundraisers, I don't know about, I mean, I'm sure that all of us do from time to time, support them.
It would just be nice to know, like the Boston Butt Sale, I mean, you may would want to buy a Boston Butt, or, I don't know that we're going out there for Krispy Kremes or Johnson Donuts, but you may want some, but I just, if, if not, then we need to relook at our policy because our policy says that the principal, and actually, actually, the policies are now being attached to the bottom of the request form, so it's right there for you to read, and it says that the principal is, has the authority, is approved by the principal, and that the funds are managed by the principal. So we're not telling them how to use their funds, so I think they should have some, some leeway in being able to do it.
So really, the, the form you've got here has the signature of the principal. So really, all you need to do is, is when they complete this form, just circulate that to the board.
As a courtesy.
As a courtesy, so y'all would know about it, but that, you've already got the form set up and everything.
That's right. Okay.
No, my only concern was make sure that, because I've been asked about a fundraiser the day before they had it, the sponsor of the fundraiser, and there's no way for me to inform the board that quick.
And, and at that point, then the principal would make the decision, and we would see after if it's...
So it's okay to let you inform after the fact?
Yeah, but, but because on that fundraiser, fundraiser, I would suspect that's something that's going on in the school, like a school-based event, either...
A game, for example.
Or, I don't, I can't think of how it would be, maybe wearing something one day, and you're paying a dollar or something to wear a different hat or something, I'm not sure, or something, something that they've approved. But I, I don't have an issue with that. I don't have an issue with that. Okay, is there any more discussion? There's no more discussion. All those in favor, show a hand. Well, well, we'll, we'll do, excuse me, we will do where I, where I will ask, where I will ask since Ms. Bell is virtually. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda items.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Carroll, approve or...
Approve.
Approve. Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson? Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
And I approve also. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. Okay, 5.1, we're fortunate tonight to, to have with us Regions Bank to present a P-card presentation, and we appreciate the snacks prior to the meeting that was provided by the bank, so thank you.
You're welcome. My name is Rhonda Sath, and I'm the Commercial Relationship Manager for Regions, and I cover this area. I also manage your bond note. I was the banker on that whenever y'all, we bid out for that. So Regions is a relationship bank, so we try to, you know, see things that you need and bring it to your attention. In this case, Ms. Rose and Ms. Shirley had contacted us, you know, about a credit card program, just to see what it would look like, and this is something that our school, school boards and, you know, most of the school boards, this is what they use as a commercial card program because of the controls that it has. I've been with Regions about 16 years, been in banking 35, and I have with me today, that's going to be presenting to you, Mr. Tim Lynch. And Tim is, he's actually been with Regions five years, but he comes from, to us from, he was a Component Program Manager for the Marine Corps, and he's a retired Master Sergeant. So he's got a lot of experience with commercial cards, and he is going to present our program to you today, and that is what he does with Regions Bank, is he is our commercial card consultant. It's all he does. Take it away, Tim.
Thank you very much, Rhonda, for the introduction, and, and good evening, everyone. I apologize that I can't be there in person this evening, but I look forward to taking a few moments here to demonstrate to you our, our platform, our, our online solution, which we call Regions Intersect. Essentially, it's a four-component solution, which provides you the ability for card management. It will provide you expense management, if you're not using the expense management tool today, as well as an automated payable tool that allows you to pay your suppliers via a virtual card, which increases speed to pay, as well as enhances security and cuts costs of surrounding how you make payments today. Then also, it provides a reporting module. And speaking from having sat on your side of the table and managing a, a large program, this is absolutely the most robust reporting module I've ever used. So I have been a, a customer of Bank of America and of Citibank, and then post-retirement, I had to go get a real job, and I was at American Express for a couple of years, managing tech and defense companies in the DC area. And then I was actually, did a stop at Citibank for about three years, where I had managed my old program from the bank side. Now I have been with Regions for almost five years, and quite frankly, this is the most user-friendly tool that I've ever used. But as something Rhonda had pointed out earlier, the, the most powerful part of our program that we have is really is our relationships with you, because our human capital is where we really shine. But our tools are also very, they're excellent. So let me, I'm going to share my screen, and what I want to share with you is the online platform, and I realize that everyone's time is important, so I will, I will move through this fairly briskly. I don't want to waste your time, but please, if any moment you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. So as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to demonstrate Regions Intersect. This is an online platform. It is a single sign-on. It is a permissions-based, so you can give users from program admins to cardholders to auditors, you can give individuals the access that they need. You know, I'm going to kind of give you a high-level look, kind of really from a program manager standpoint. So let me go ahead and get logged in here, and hopefully I can remember my password. Now, when you log in, this is not something that you would see. This is because of my, the demonstration tool that I have here. Typically, what will happen as a program manager, when you log into the tool, this is normally what you would see. You would see a screen such as this. If you were utilizing what we call our distributed card program, where you were using the expense management tool, you would see a landing page here that would show number of outstanding transactions to be reviewed, and any other types of actions that need to be taken. What this is showing is kind of the accounts payable piece, which I'll touch on that here in a moment. But essentially, when you log into our tool, you will come to a landing page, this is what you'll see. In the upper-left-hand corner, this is our announcement section. This is where we'll push out things such as Regions Intersect. We'll be down Saturday evening or Saturday night from 1:00 to 1:30, allowing us, us to do updates. You, as an organization, can also leverage this announcement section. So maybe you want to push out something to your cardholders, let them know of a policy update. You can push out to your program administrators if there, if there's some actions that they need to take, so you can use that. In the My Links section, this, one thing that's very nice about Regions Intersect is it allows you, it kind of understands where you go most often in the tool, and will develop hyperlinks for you, which will make it easier and more efficient for you to navigate the tool. Over here on the right-hand side are the Quick Links and Reports. Those will always be there. They're static, and they're never going to change. And across the top is Administration. So this is where you, essentially, you manage the shell of your program, so you can have different hierarchies established. So a, a great example, this would be, maybe you want to have a hierarchy just for school board staff. You want to have one for the high school. You want to have one for the middle schools and the elementary schools. So you can have different, different hierarchies that have different levels of activity or different levels of, of permission based upon the spending needs of those particular organizations within your organization. So we can do permissions based upon organization. We can do them based upon hierarchy level, as well as at the cardholder level. One thing I really like to point out is the File Upload section, and the Regions Intersect gives you a, a high level of self-service capabilities. So you always have the ability to contact our Commercial Card Support Desk, which is manned 24/7, 365, so it's always available to you. You always have your Regions account managers, so whether it's Rhonda or it's Christine Wright, who's your Treasury Management Officer. You will also have a dedicated account manager, someone who's your go-to Monday through Friday, should you have an issue, or there's some program optimization you want to take care of. His name is Alvaro Noriega, and he is your go-to Monday through Friday. And, but this file uploads, what is nice about it is if you have, you need to order multiple cards at one time, you can do that through the file upload process. You don't have to do it one by one. If your GL codes change and you need to update those within the expense management module, you can do that as well here. So there's lots of functionality that you can do within the file upload. The security, it's just like it sounds, it is where you create user IDs, passwords, for your cardholders and program administrators alike. Payables, I'm going to come back to that, because it's, it's, I don't have to cover a lot there, but it's, this is where virtual card payments are made. Reports, I'm going to come back to that as well. But first, I'm going to go into card maintenance. So this is the first component of Regions Intersect, which is the card maintenance piece. This is where you can manage program accounts. As I mentioned earlier, you can order cards within this system, and you can do it through the file upload process, or you could actually go right here and click the Create button, and this is where you, I'm not going to do it because I don't want to put one into the queue, but it's very simple. You do it here as a program admin, enter some information, and the card is ordered. I'm going to bring up some cardholders here. So this is, this is my team, so I'm allowed to show you this, but I'll actually bring up my card. So from here, I can download statements, and I can do that in Excel CSV format. I can look at the history of this account. I can view recent authorizations. I don't have any recent authorizations, but if I did, you could click this, and it would show you those recent authorizations. And this is especially useful, that if you have a cardholder who is trying to use their account, and the card was declined for some reason, as a program administrator, I can come in here and quickly see what the issue was and correct it, and so that the cardholder can go about and do their business. We also have the ability to do assigned proxies within Intersect. You don't have to leverage this if you don't want to, but you may have some people within your organization, say principals, or school board presidents, who are very busy. They don't have time to do their own expense report. They can actually have someone assigned to do the reports for them and give them the access. But let me go into my account very quickly. Now, I am entering my account, but I can't, as you can see, I cannot change any information in here. That is a security protocol that we have. You cannot change your own account. So basic information, you'll see here, last four digits of the account. We do not pull full 16-digit account numbers within Intersect. That is for security reasons. If you had an instance where you needed the full 16 digits, please just contact your dedicated account manager, and they can help you do that. Cardholder information, pretty straightforward. This is where information is held. One thing I do like to point out here, as you see social security number, we do not ask for social security numbers for any of your, any of your cardholders. It's not necessary for us to have that information. What we do ask for is a unique four-digit identifier for your cardholders. It can be the last four of their social. It can be the last four of their employee ID. It can be four that they make up, as long as your cardholder knows what that four-digit identifier is. And what we use that for is if your cardholder has to contact Regions, we can positively identify them. That's what it's used for. Limits, this is where we establish limits here on the program. These are the, the static limits that are on the permit limits here on the card. 5,000, our policy here is 5,000. Single purchase limit is 5,000. We can also do velocity limits or interval limits, daily, monthly, and cycle, and we can do that with number of transactions as well. If I were to need to make a change here, and let's say I wanted to bump this to $10,000, as a program administrator, I can do that. As soon as I hit Save, that card has automatically been changed. That is a real-time change within our system. So if you have a cardholder that is bumping up against a, bumping up against a limit, they can't use their card, I can change it. It's real-time. We also have the ability to do temporary settings. So if I wanted to put, if I have a cardholder, their normal limit, say, is $500, but I knew they needed to make a large purchase, or they're going to go on some travel where they needed more, I can put a start date and end date and put that credit limit in here, and that, that when they begin their travel, the new higher limit will begin, and as soon as that travel's over, that end date occurs, the card reverts back to its previous, previous limit, and the cardholder is back to where they were before it started. And we can do that with purchase limits, and we can also do that with merchant category code profiles, because what we can do here at Regions is really enforce policy within the system. So we can do that through the card limits, but we can also do it with the merchant category code profiles. And so just very quickly, every merchant out there is assigned a merchant category code profile. That's how they are established. It's four digits. So all airlines have their own, retail stores have merchant category codes. So if I need to ensure that cards are not being used at establishments I don't want them to, maybe I have a cardholder, there's no need for them to have any hotels or restaurants or rental cars, we can actually turn that off. And you can build templates for your cardholders that if they were to need that, you can turn it on. We can, we'll work with you during the implementation process to ensure that you have the proper codes that you need, but you, as program administrators, can always have the ability to change those to suit your purposes and to really enforce the policy. And if I think back on my previous years as a program administrator, that was some of the functionality that really helped drive the behaviors that were expected by our cardholders. Not that we didn't trust them, but it really just, it just made it easy for us and for them to use the card in the manner which it was intended. So that was probably one. If I look at two things that were most important to me, it was cardholder behavior, and then the ability to audit, which I'll get into the report section in a moment. So essentially, this is our cardholder profile. This is how you can make edits and changes. You can also, from this screen, you can also report a card lost or stolen. So if a cardholder would call you and say, "I'm sorry, I've lost my card," as a program administrator, you can begin that, begin that action right here, report it lost or stolen, and get a new card ordered. And there's a couple of different delivery methods we can do, just the regular mail, which takes five to seven business days, or you can actually expedite a card, which can be, it can be to you in about two or three business days, depending upon what your needs are. So in terms of card management or card maintenance, is there, are there any questions?
Does anyone have a question? No, sir. No, sir, no questions.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, and you also have the ability to activate cards here, so your cardholders, when they get their cards, you can, as a program administrator, you can go ahead and turn their cards on for them. So it's, which, that's a, that's a nice feature that we have, something that a lot of people have been asking for, and we've recently implemented that. So I'll go into transactions, and I'll just focus kind of on transaction management and what our process is, and then, one thing I do want to point out is, this solution is very configurable. What you are seeing today is essentially how Regions is set up, but we can get very creative in the way that it... But we can get very creative in the way that it would be set up for your school district. So maybe you don't need all the functionality that you see here. We can tailor it to what your needs are. So, let's go back to here. So I'll pull some transactions up. So typically, when a cardholder, they have the transactions, transactions would flow into the tool. Those transactions would come in, this is what you'll see. So basic information, posting date, each actual transaction date, the cardholder, who the merchant was and the amount. And I'm going to grab mine, so I'm going to highlight this. So this is where I can look at merchant details, billing details. So it gives me a lot of information about the particular vendor. If I needed to see some tier-three level data, if the supplier has provided that, I would be able to see that here as well. But here at Regions, we do our ledger codes. We've got two that are required and we have up to five more that are optional. I have, I've never seen any client use more than, say, five or six maybe segments of their ledger codes. But we do have the ability to provide you up to 20. You also have the ability to use an unlimited number of ledger codes. So what we do here at Regions is we use simply a dropdown method. We can, like I said earlier, we can configure this in any manner you want to. We can change the headers on these, so maybe it's not a cost center, it's an obligor code. Maybe it's not an apartment, it could be contract. It's whatever you want those headers to look like. And we can also have these fields pre-populate. So maybe you have a cardholder, regardless of when they make a purchase or what purchase they make, it's going to hit the same cost, a ledger code every time in the cost center. Or you can have free-form fields. So this is particularly useful if you're doing, making purchases that are tied to grants. You could actually put that grant number in here. And then that transaction link can be, you can do audits, relay that back to that grant number. So it makes it very easy and it's a really great way to do audits. But what, how we do it here at Regions, we use kind of a dropdown method. So I click on the magnifying glass and it gives me choices. I was going to call this one office applies. Then based upon that choice, it's going to give me another set of choices. And I'm just going to go to information. And then from there, I could put in additional information that I needed to. This is also where I can attach receipts if I need to. So I just scan my receipt, it goes into a folder on my desktop and I choose any of these formats to put it in. It can be up over, just over four megabytes, which is pretty large. And then I just click upload receipt and that receipt is attached to the transaction. And then I can submit it to the next person in the workflow approval process. I also have the ability to split a transaction. And now this is not, split transaction, I don't mean in the sense of trying to bypass any purchase limits. You know, splitting a transaction so I get under that purchase limit so I don't need an approval. But let's say, for example, I use my card at a hotel and my lodging goes to one GL code, but my meals that I charge the room go to another GL code. That's where I can do that here. I simply do the dropdowns like I had done previously. I put in the amount, so I have $600 on my room. That leaves me a remainder of $195 here, so I would put that here. Put that here, as long as my remaining amount is zero and I'm 100% down here, I'm good to go. I can then add notes to the transaction, I can attach receipts and submit it for approval and it's where it needs to be. Once I have, once I have submitted my transaction for approval, it will go to a reviewer or approver. Typically, a lot of school districts, they have a go-to accounting. Someone in accounting can look at that transaction, ensure that's a correct GL code. And then, once it's been approved, and you can have as many reviewers or approvers that you need. So maybe you can have it go first to a supervisor, then it goes to accounting. It's however you want it, we'll, during the implementation process, we will work with you to make sure that's exactly the way you want it. But once the approval process has been done and it's been saved by the last reviewer and the transaction has been approved, that will then go to a reconciliation file and we will send you a reconciliation file, which will contain all the transactional detail as well as the GL coding that you can then ingest into your ERP so that your GL is balanced. And we work with many different GL, many different ERP systems so we can format that file in the manner that you need it. And we can send that file to you via SFTP, FTP. We can even have it delivered via the file upload process so you can go into this tool and pull it down. And we've seen many school districts do it in that manner as well. So many different ways to deliver that file to you securely and we can deliver that at a frequency that you need. So whether it's daily, weekly, monthly, typically it's daily, but we can definitely do the frequency that you want. Now additionally, the image files that are the receipts, those will be retained within Intersect. You'll be able to pull those down off the platform for a period of up to two years, which is really good for auditing purposes. But we will also send you a digital image file. Typically, we do that once a month, that we can send to you so you can store it and that file will be indexed so you can search it. So if you've got to do some audits, you have the ability to do that. And if you also need to substantiate any transactions, you have the receipts that you need on hand. But you'll always have those in at least two places if you want the file from us. And so essentially, that is transaction management very quickly, but that's our expense manager tool, allows you to code transactions from cards and balance your GL. Any questions in regards to the expense management module?
No questions.
No questions. No questions. No, sir.
Okay, so let me go into payables real quick. So this is our account payable module. So what I really like about this is it's a very powerful tool. It allows you to deliver efficiencies into your accounting, accounts payable process and really put the power of your ERP to work. So essentially, what's going to happen today, your procure-to-pay process remains largely unchanged. So you're still going to have requisitions, approvals, POs. Goods and services are delivered and invoices, you receive an invoice. That invoice is reviewed for payment and approved. Once you create the payment file, instead of creating a payment file for check, you would create a payment file for virtual card payment. Then that payment, that virtual file gets sent to us. We pick it up and push out virtual payment, virtual payments to your suppliers who will accept virtual payment. And then you can always come in here and you can look at the status of those payments. And so here you would see just basically just the information of the status of that payment, whether or not the cardholder, or excuse me, the merchant has finalized the transaction. Now there's no card information contained in here because what happens is the card, the, I take that back, you can create card information in here. However, the supplier has their own secure portal, which we call AR Exchange. And they would log in, they would see a virtual card payment from your school district. It would have the list of invoices that were paid with that virtual card number and they would finalize the transaction. When you send us a payment file with a payment instruction to a supplier, that supplier is going to receive a remittance advice via email. And essentially, what that information will have is it'll be a traditional remittance advice with your logo on it. It will have a set of invoice numbers on it, total amount of the payment and then a hyperlink for them to enter into their portal AR Exchange. What I really like about this, having worked accounts payable in the Marine Corps for many years, is I don't have suppliers calling me anymore wanting to know when a certain invoice is going to get paid. They actually have a portal, they can go log in and see that invoice has been paid to them. So great information. It also gives you the ability to, now we'll, in order to get started and have the merchants within the system, we'll actually enroll those merchants for you. So during the implementation phase, we will do a supplier engagement campaign where we will reach out to your suppliers on your behalf that you want us to reach out to. We'll explain to them the benefits of taking a virtual card payment. The virtual card payment rides the Visa rails, so it's a, it is a Visa payment. And then, once they're enrolled, they'll be able to accept virtual card payments from you through Regions. Once again, delivering efficiencies into how you do your accounts payable today. So pretty straightforward, there's a lot of functionality in here that we can deliver. One of those is that when you submit a virtual card payment to a supplier, you can give them a, an expiration date of when that card needs to be paid. Typically, it's 30 days and the system will automatically send them a reminder email. And we can set that out 10 days, three days, two days, whatever you want. Send them a reminder email to process that payment. However, typically, we don't see suppliers not processing payments within the two to three days. Once suppliers want to get, they want to finalize those transactions as quickly as possible. So any, any questions on, on virtual card and automated payables is what we call this?
No, I'm good.
No, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to go into reports just very quickly. So this is a, this is what I really like to highlight with Regions Intersect. Because when I think about efficiently managing a program, one, I think of a system or a tool that allows me to enforce card policies and cardholder behavior. But then I also need the ability to audit my program, to ensure everything is working as I intended. And that's what this really allows me to do. So we have a couple of different things. We have standard reports, which, there's about eight of them out here. These are, these are always accessible to you, these are, you can't change these, you can't edit them, but you can run them. You can also schedule them to run, so all transactions, you can look at accounts, you can look at expense logs, things of that nature, users, who's in the system, who has access to the system, what that access looks like. So these stand, these reports are always here. We also have the ability to create our own reports through the Report Wizard. And so when I create a report, I can save it to the My Reports folder. If I'm a program admin and I've created a report that I think is just the most amazing report ever, I can actually go save it in my company reports so it is accessible to everyone within my organization. That's a very nice feature about this. So in the Report Wizard, I'm going to quickly go in here and just, we'll create a quick report that I like to use for audit tools. So I kind of recall this reporting, Reporting for Dummies, just because of the power and also kind of the intuitiveness that Regions Intersect has in regards to it. So we have almost 800 different data points that you can include into reports. As I tell, tell all my clients that I meet with, if you can dream it, you can do it. I have not seen this system broken yet and we can pull just about any data element in combination thereof that you can think of. But I'm going to do a very quick ad hoc report where I want to make sure that cardholders in my organization have the card limit that they're supposed to have. So I'm going to choose a cardholder view, that's my focus, then I can select field that I want in that. So I'm going to continue with the cardholder theme. So I want to see credit limit and then I just want to see first name and last name. Then I'm going to add those selected fields to my report. So that's all I need in this particular report. Choose next. And then I can group this by credit limit and I am going to go ahead and group this by credit limit. And then I can apply a filter, so I don't need to see everyone. I just want to see anyone who exceeds a particular limit in this, in this instance. So I want to see anything greater than $4,000. So I'm going to go ahead and automatically add that filter to my report. And then I can format this report, I can change the columns if I want to, but I'm not going to do that in this instance, so I'm just going to leave it as is. Now this is where I really like the power of Intersect. I can go ahead and run this report as is. I can go ahead and save it and it would go to the My Reports folder or I can put it in the Company folder or I can schedule it and this is what I like. So let's say I've got a particular report that I like to run every other Wednesday. I can have, I can set this up and I can schedule it on the frequency that I, frequency that I want. I can run it daily, monthly, quarterly, weekly. I can save it in multiple formats. So maybe you've got a particular report or some data that you want to be able to ingest into your ERP. You can actually create and format that file right here. Pipe delimited, tab delimited, even comma delimited, which is typically all the standard reporting files that you need, you can do that. And I can do that in summary or I can do it summary with detail, I'll do it with detail here. I can even encrypt the password, or I can encrypt the file and that's important because I can have this report emailed directly to someone. So let's maybe say I've got auditors or supervisors that don't have access to Intersect. They don't necessarily need access to Intersect, but maybe they need some data. As a program admin, I can create a report for them and I can have that report sent directly to their inbox. I can have a password protected and that way, they don't have access to my system, they have the data that they need. And I can send it to multiple email addresses. And so that's a really nice detail that Regions Intersect really delivers in terms of a reporting capacity. But what I want to do is I'm going to go ahead and just run this report very quickly. And I want to, I'll go ahead and submit it. So it shows me I've got five, I have six cardholders that have a limit of $5,000. So now I need to look at this. Okay, now I see everyone here, I know all these people are all on my team. They should have that limit. Let me go back because I saw one that was $40,000. I want to highlight that and look at that record. One card, and that is our CBA account, so I know that's legitimate. So I know that no one is outside the parameters of acceptable card limits. So that is essentially Regions Intersect. So I've shown you the card management module, the reporting module, the accounts payable module and the expense management module. I think some interesting notes about this is that we have a full technology team that will help you implement this. This is a cloud-based solution, this is internet, so there's no programs that you need to use this. There are no, there's no additional hardware that you need to operate this. As well as, everything I have shown you this evening, you can do via a mobile device. So smartphone or tablet, you can do, you have all the same functionality on that with no additional hardware or software needs. Additionally, we don't charge anything for implementation or we also don't have any monthly maintenance fees. We provide this service free of cost to our school districts. So any questions about Regions Intersect or a Regions commercial card program?
No, sir, we don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, Rhonda, anything else that you would like to add?
No, I think, I think everything's good. Y'all will just need to let me know. I will get the overall limit that you're needing approved and then you'll decide if you go with it, you know, how you divvy that up between, you know, the different departments.
Just note to the board, Ms. Rainick has been talking with Ms. South about this and so we are a little bit familiar with it.
So, did we want to vote on this tonight?
She wants you to vote on whether the district would like to go this direction or not. Because we really need, there are some instances where we need credit cards and we really do not have an efficient way of doing credit cards for the system.
What would this take the place of, let's say, how have you been doing it?
The Shell credit card, the BP credit card, the mobile credit card when we go on trips that we will need to buy gas. They issue us three cards because they may not, we don't know which tank, and that's an example. And the Wells Fargo card. And sometimes you need to make hotel reservations and we have the, and we have a small credit limit on that. And we just need one specific card that we can deal with.
And if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Rainick had said that no one specifically from the district will be like, as the person on the card, it will be the district on the card?
Well, the, the school board is responsible for the program. So she was just wanting to ensure that y'all didn't have to provide your social security numbers.
The individual cards won't have a human's name on them. It'll say, "School Board of Madison County, Florida" or something like that.
Tim? Tim, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, so it's certainly up to you. It's, we can, we can establish the accounts any way you want to. So if you don't, if you don't put an individual's name on it, those would be typically what we call unit cards or department cards. They're not as secure because typically you have to, you know, it'll be kept in another safe and then you have to issue it to someone. You can certainly issue cards to whoever you want to and however you want to. It's really just a matter of, and in those, like I mentioned earlier, there's no social security cards. cards, you know, no social security numbers associated with any of these cards, because they're issued on behalf of the, the school board and the school district. So, really, to answer your question, we can do department cards if that's the way you wish to go, but we can also issue cards to individuals, it's really up to the, up to your preference.
I think she was planning on having a very minute number with names on it, but the real big issue came in with the prior card, we, we had persons having to give their social security number.
That's what concerns me, is I just don't want any of our, like, employees having to put their social security number on it, and they're the ones who's on it.
Right, no, I think she was talking about like, on the credit, a lot of credit cards are set up that way, and that's why, you know, when we get, I will get the approval for the credit part of it, and it will be done on the school board's tax ID number, is the way that we'll, you know, do it through your audit. And we have those, they're on the, on your website.
And even if someone's name is on a card, whoever's managing the program, they will have access to the credit limit, and that's instant, instant, that can happen instantly, am I correct?
Right, see, like mine with Regions Bank, I have a card, and it does have my name on it, but I'm not like, you know, it's not like on my credit report, that makes sense.
And they can control your spend, I mean, they can control your credit limit.
Right, right, they can, they can change it, you know, and I've had to do that, like, I've went on seminars and, you know, whatever my limit is, and I need more, and they just, you know, we just contact them and they change it, and then they put it back down.
I think it's a good idea, again, I think it's better than what we have now and what we're doing.
If, if somebody leaves, you know, if somebody leaves and they've got a card, you can just close it out.
Right.
And if they don't give it back, you just close it out.
If, if you all approve it tonight, I'm sure there's going to be a contract or something that you need to decide.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we will, we will get the overall limit done, that will be the first step, I will do that. Tim will kind of let me know, he's done like a vendor match to see, you know, what vendors will accept the card and, and whatnot. And, Tim, I think you've got that in process or completed.
It's still in process, I'm having Visa review it.
Okay.
Because it's also going to be, you know, there's some other just kind of ancillary things on our end, but I should have that in the next couple of days.
Okay, and, and what he does with that is he, you know, he will let, they do a, a Visa vendor match, and it will tell who accepts Visa, basically, and who accepts a card. They, Regions does all that for you, so you're not having to do it, so you will know exactly where you can use the card. I mean, of course, you're going to be able to use it, you know, like I used it at, you know, Chick-fil-A's, I think I went to the Windexy, you know, had to get something from CVS, so, you know, anything where you use Visa, Pay at the Pump, you know, whatever, that's going to work, hotel, motel, air, you know.
Is the idea that we're going to just be using this in places that we presently use a credit card, or is the idea that it would take the place of some vendor payments that we're making now by check?
You, you should really do both, because, you know, and, and Tim will get into this later, when he, you know, finishes the vendor match, but you have potential to earn rebates, and they have it set up with the Florida school districts, you know, they have a special rebate. And if you, the more you use it for your payables, that's where you're going to get your big rebate.
So, so for instance, you could pay your power bill for this, if they accept it.
If they accept it.
And, and then you get a rebate on the money you paid.
Exactly.
That was my question, because if we're going to eliminate these credit card, we're going to put a lot of money on this card, and so there would be some incentives then to come along with it.
Yes, ma'am. And, and ours is cash rebate.
Okay.
And that comes, however you, I guess you could set it up, I think they normally do it annually, right, Tim?
That's, that's our normal process annually, yes, ma'am.
And I love bringing out them big fat chicks.
So, I, I think all you could do today is, by consensus, kind of approve the process, and then we're going to have to get a written contract from you all to come back and.
Yes, sir, and, and then you would, you would just tell me who's going to be designated to sign it, I guess the chairman or superintendent, I've had both.
For the, are you talking about the contract, or are you talking about the actual card?
The, the actual contract that we.
The chairperson.
Yeah, so the, the contract would need to be approved by the board, so we'd need that in the packet for a board meeting, and then the board will vote on it, and then once the board votes on it, it's the chairman that signs the contract and testifies.
Okay, so what the next step is, is, is figuring out what your limit needs to be, your overall limit, and so Tim will help in that process, because we'll know what your potential is, and then also, you know, I'll get with Rose, and she can kind of help with, assist with that as well, with, you know, what your travel and entertainment expenditures are.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the process and the written contract with Regions?
I, I don't think you can do a motion right now, because you're not looking at the written contract. I think all you can do right now is just by consensus, say that you want to go forward with the process, and then when we actually get a written contract off the board.
Okay, is there, Mr. Carroll, do you agree with going forward?
I do.
Ms. Bell, do you agree with going forward?
I do, I approve.
Ms. Gibson, do you agree?
Yes.
Ms. Williamson?
And I too agree, so five oh for agreement to approve the process to begin the contract.
Ms. Bishop?
If you can get us that contract, we'll get it approved, and then we'll start.
Okay, so my next step is, is figuring out what the limit would be, and then from that, it, it takes, you know, fairly quickly to get it approved. And we've done lending in the past to y'all, so there should be no problem with that.
Okay, Ms. Rainick will probably be in touch with you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Is there an interest rate that, that accompanies these payments?
The way that they set it up, because your payment, and Tim can talk more about that, but your payment is actually, I think I brought y'all a spreadsheet, but it's actually every month, whatever is on that card, you'll pay it in, at the end of the month, but it, but it can be, Tim, sixty, sixty-one days?
Sixty-one days. So, yeah, so let me jump here real quick, so we have different cycles you can face, so think, don't think of this program as a, as a credit card, it is a charge card. So, our, our traditional cycle is thirty, fifteen, so that means you have a thirty-day billing period, and then fifteen days after the cycle closes, that's when the payment will be due. So, typically, school, we see, typically, we see school districts and school boards send us payment, we can also ACH the payment directly out of any account that you direct us to. So, it just, it just depends on how you want it, but we can do a thirty, fifteen, we can do a fourteen, seven, seven, three, it's all dependent upon the cycle that you prefer. There is no interest rate, because we don't, we're not carrying any balances forward. So, really, the only, the only fees that you'll ever see are, are, one, would be an expedited card fee, so if you needed to have a card expedited, I believe it's twenty-five dollars, and that is just a pass-through cost from Visa to, to you, we don't add anything to it. And then there is also, there can be foreign, foreign conversion fees, so if you had anybody traveling internationally, then those, that's essentially just a pass-through fee as well. But that, that will all be outlined in the fee sheet that you see when we present the agreement to you.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, we'll get you more details, though, you know, as we move forward, but we just had to have permission to be able to put the credit piece in place, and I won't know what that limit is until he finishes that vendor match, and then I get with Ms. Rose to see, you know, what you think you're going to use it for, because the worst thing we could do is set your limit too low.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for the presentation, thank you for the treats.
Oh, you're welcome, anytime. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a great night, everyone.
You too, thank you. Okay, that was the P Card presentation by Regions Bank. Okay, item five point two, the field trips, and we have two field trips. We have, on October the eighth, we have the FFA going to Mayo, Florida for a day trip, it's farm judging, eight students will be going and one adult. On October the twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, Madison County Central School pre-K has taken a field trip to the Madison County High School farm. From nine forty-five to ten forty-five, there's forty students and seven chaperones. It's Ms. Lawanda Jennings' class, Ms. Amy Webb, and Ms. Laura Singletary. Those are the field trips. Is there a motion to approve the field trips?
I'll make the motion to approve the field trips.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion?
I was excited to see Central's taking students to the high school for a field trip.
Yeah, that's exciting.
It's very close, and it's something that would be good for everyone.
Yes, I applaud her creativity, she wanted them to see a farm, we have a farm.
Yes, we have a farm, so let's use it.
Utilize the resources you have.
That's, that's really good. So, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Mr. Carroll, all those in favor, Mr. Carroll?
I approve.
Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
And I too approve, five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval for the field trip request. Five point three, personnel changes, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, our personnel changes are listed, we've got one employee for, recommended for teacher, pending background check, we've got two resignations and one termination, we've got two leave of absences, and we have some substitute recommendations. And just a note on the substitute recommendation, we are going with Kelly Services, but they are not effective until October eighteenth, they're going live, and in between now and then, we need to use these, and they are transitioning over to Kelly.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the personnel changes?
I move to approve the personnel changes.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, is there a second?
Got second.
Second.
Okay, it's, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Mr. Carroll, any discussion? There's no discussion. Mr. Carroll, approve or disapprove?
Approve.
Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
And myself, I approve the personnel changes, five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval.
I just have one little question, Ms. Joseph?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad we got a teacher, do we need more?
Yes, ma'am, we need some more. But we're taking them everywhere to come, and we're still advertising, we've got our recruitment day set up to attend recruitment fair about also state soon.
Maybe we'll check way out and get them.
Yes, and we still have two, we're waiting on two for the high school, the band teacher and the English teacher, we're waiting on them to pay for it to come through.
Okay.
Okay, that was personnel changes. Five point four is staff trips, five point four is staff trips. We have the first staff trip is the National ID and R Forum, it's in Miami, Florida, October the twelfth through the fifteenth, it's through Title I Part A. Ms. Alvita Howard and Nick Gonzalez will be going, it's an update for recruitment and identification of migrant children and expectations for LEAs, form updates and policy changes, that's through Title I. The second trip request is the FISBIT Fall Meeting, it's no cost, it's October the twelfth through the fourteenth, Ms. Joseph will be going, it's an insurance update through FISBIT. The third staff trip is the FSFOA Conference, it's the Finance Officers Conference, November the ninth through the twelfth in Orlando, Florida. Ms. Rainick's going, and Ms. Fletcher's going from the Finance Department, so November the ninth through the twelfth. Those are the staff trips, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the staff trips.
Okay, the motion has been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, is there a second?
Second.
And second by Ms. Williamson, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll and seconded by Ms. Williamson. Currently, is there any debate or discussion concerning the motion? If there's no discussion, we'll proceed with the vote, Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
Approve, Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
And I too approve, five oh, Ms. Bishop, for staff trips. Okay, five point five, the financial report, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, Ms. Rainick has prepared the finance report for September twenty twenty-one. I don't think these are September reports, because September just ended, I think these are August reports. So, we need to correct those. September just ended last week, and these were done before the end of this, and so a correction is these are August reports. And I think you've got a lot of tabs, but we'll basically focus on your summary reports, we've got the summary report for Fund One Hundred, which is your general account, we've got a summary report for Fund Two Hundred, is your debt, debt service fund, and Fund Three Hundred, which is your fixed capital lay, Fund Four Ten, which is your full service fund, and your Fund Four Twenty, which is your federal grants fund. She should be at the next meeting if you need any more detail. But she, your working papers are included in that, but we normally just give you the summary reports.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the financial reports?
I move to approve the financial reports. You said that Ms. Rainick will be giving us more of a, a report the next time.
Yes, ma'am, she will.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been properly moved by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Ms. Williamson. Currently, is there any debate or discussion on the motion?
Just make sure you note, these are August reports rather than September.
Okay.
So, if there's no debate, or there's no discussion, we'll proceed with the vote on the motion. Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson? Ms. Williamson? And I too approve, five oh, Ms. Bishop, for the financial reports to be accepted. Five point six, school improvement plans. Ms. Thomas, school improvement plans for Panetta Elementary, Madison County Central, Madison County High School, Greenville Elementary, and Lee Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am just going to be highlighting their school improvement areas, since the data was shared with you all before by each principal when they had to do their school overview, so we're just going to look at their areas of focus. We'll start with Madison County High School, and if you will look under the section that says Improvement Plan, it says, I'm sorry, Planning for Improvement. Planning for Improvement is the section you should look for, it's like a blue highlighted section. So, at Madison County High School, their, their goal for this upcoming twenty-one, twenty-two school year, for an area of focus, just meaning that's an area where they're going to really work hard to try to make some changes, is ELA, their ELA proficiency. Currently, their ELA proficiency was thirty-one percent for a previous school year, and their goal is for, for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, is forty-one percent for ELA proficiency. Their plans in order to do that is by using their Close Read Strategy, that's a research-based strategy, and they also will be doing small group instruction in their intensive reading classes as well. They have a monitoring system in process, their instructional coach, Ms. Leslie Fletcher will be working closely with ELA teachers, planning with them, and assisting them with the strategies, going in and doing classroom walkthroughs, providing feedback to the teachers, and planning with them based on data that they receive, and, you know, trying to see which changes they need to make, or if they need to go with a different strategy. The reason they decided to choose the Close Read Strategy is, like I said, for one, it's research-based, also their ninth and tenth grade students would benefit from it, and they also are partnering, partnering with Chris Bray, with Jess Rea. And they also are partnering, partnering with Chris Bray with Jess Reed Florida. That is a free partnership and they have been receiving strategies from her as well that they are implementing in their reading classes and in their ELA classes. Eventually, the school said that they are going to be implementing reading strategies across all curriculum. Another area of focus for them is their graduation. They would like their graduation, graduation, um, graduation, I can't talk tonight, to increase from 91% to 93%. That's their goal for this upcoming year, 93%. And one of the things they're going to do is intense tracking. Mr. Tim Meissen is their graduation coach and he is working with the students, tracking their data and also meeting with them and making sure that they have ample opportunities to meet graduation requirements by concordant scores, FSA retakes and things of that sort. In addition, they have those students who need a graduation concordant score in classes for SAT or ACT prep. So they're receiving that additional help. They're also having support for them after school. They have after-school tutoring available for those students and Saturday school. And also those students are in an intensive reading class as well. Finally, their math proficiency, they, their current math proficiency at the school was 29%. Their goal for 2022 in the spring is 41%. And their plans to make that happen is using also, like I said, they're going to be implementing close read strategies as well in the math class. And they are going to look at the complexity level of the standards for both algebra and geometry. And they are going to be working with the teachers as far as making sure their questioning and their testing aligns with the rigor of FSA testing.
For?
They are also using USA Test Prep. USA Test Prep in those areas for math, for Algebra I and also geometry. That is a program that allows students, it assesses where they are, finds out their skill set and gives them interventions in order to improve their math skills. It also allows the teachers to do progress monitoring and that's the progress monitoring tool they're going to use for their math as well. And based on the progress monitoring data, teachers will be able to make changes and adjustments. They will also be meeting weekly through Common Planning. And that's in both the math and ELA where teachers are expected to work together, look at their data and, you know, come up with suggestions for improvements.
I have a question for the people at home who may be looking at this.
Mm-hmm.
Could you just clarify, what are the, what would be the early warning indicators? Or what was the other term that was, I guess, the early warning indicators? Would that be like truancy or failures, like retentions?
Okay, awesome question. So every school, including especially Madison County High School, has to track what they call early warning system data. And those are indicators that let schools, school administrators and teachers know that a student is struggling. It's used to identify students who need additional help. It is a part of the MTSS program. So basically, if a student has two or more areas where they're found, what they call early warning system, such as attendance, they look at your attendance, they look at your discipline. They look at previous years' retentions. They also look at failures in math class, failures in science class and ELA. And then they also look at Level One FSA scores from the previous year. So if a student were to have three of those indicators, maybe, you know, they've got attendance below 90% because 90% is the target where you want students above 90% attendance. So if they, they have below 90% attendance, maybe they have Level One on their ELA FSA and then, you know, maybe they have five referrals. That is going to be a student that needs to be identified by the school MTSS team or sit team, depending on which school you're at. They call them different things. And the team makes a plan to help that student make progress. So essentially, it's just a way of looking at the students closer and making sure that administrators and the teachers are aware of students that are struggling or could be in jeopardy of not, you know, being promoted or being successful.
I had the same question because I could come up with myself, I could come up with some indicators, but I was wondering what they were using as indicators.
Yes.
So you've given a good explanation of that.
Yes, ma'am. And these indicators actually come from the state. And any school that has been, you know, selected to work with Department of Education have to submit their indicators monthly. So Madison County High School will have to send their indicators to the state every month. And the state just wants to know, as I said, you know, if you have 12 students over your whole population that are struggling, meaning they, you know, they're not doing well as far as these indicators go, what are you doing to help those students? And these indicators, they come from the state.
Is there, now, this may be premature, but after reading all this that you've given us here, I don't see anything that involves parents, parent involvement. And to me, that's a big, a key component in success with children, you know. I mean, not all parents are going to be involved, but is there any, is there any, are they trying to get the parents involved? Let's put it that way.
Okay, and so?
But I don't see it on this thing.
Right, yes, ma'am. And one of the things, let's keep this in mind, I'm glad you brought that up because I can take this information back to the school. Our school improvement plans are working plans, so schools can update them as needed and they can definitely go in more detail under those action steps. When, especially with the, the graduation coach, I don't know why I can't stop. And also the school counselor, they are required to meet with all students. So, you know, the graduation coach obviously starts with the 12th grade and then they work his way down to 11th grade. And during those times, they call them graduation checks or either, you know, student success checks. Those are times where they invite the parent in. And so it's, it's, it's a one-on-one meeting with the parent, the student and the coach or the guidance counselor if it's ninth or 10th grade where, you know, they talk about where the student is, if they're successful, if their grades are going well, any questions or comments. And so like I said, that's done with every student.
Is, is it done once a year or the beginning of?
It's usually done twice a year.
Okay.
Usually with the, the 12th graders, they would start around this time and they're probably all, all October. Yeah, they've probably already occurred for the 12th grade students just because, you know, you want to get on ball. If you're, if you're missing something, you want to go ahead and get it done.
You're at the 11th hour there.
Right, exactly. And then they'll move to the 11th and then, you know, they'll get all the students in by December and then once again in the spring.
But how do they, how do they contact the parents?
Usually the, the guidance counselor has secretaries and they call the parents. And then sometimes, you know, obviously, like you said, we can't reach every parent. But those parents who answer, they can set up meetings. They'll do like a meeting time with them for them to come in.
Yeah, because I, I think a lot of parents maybe would get involved if they knew, knew to get involved. In other words, because the older they get, the less the kids want them involved, you know, when they're.
That's true.
So, but still they're needed, you know.
And like I said, I can take that back to the school and as they're continuously updating their plan, they can make it more detailed about the process. And then maybe also, you know, put more, just flyers out, send stuff home with students to, you know, if your parent information isn't up to date and Sky are updated so that we can contact them and, you know, things like that. But they definitely try, especially I know with the 12th and 11th grade, they really try to make sure they get that contact, even if it's via phone.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, so we'll go to Madison County Central School next. And once again, we're going to be looking at the instructional practice area that they are trying to work on improving. And you can find that under the Planning for Improvement section.
What page you're on, can you tell us?
The pages aren't actually numbered on my end. If you look, the section is titled Planning for Improvement. It's like a blue, it'll say Part Three, Planning for Improvement. And then if you, it's right below that. So Madison County Central School was one of the schools that was selected by the state to make sure that they have both goals and a plan in place for students in the areas of ELA. So this was not a choice that the school was allowed to make, the state chose them. And so they have several goals they met, they created for K to eight. So there, for kindergarten, they wanted to maintain their proficiency rate of 100% on the I-Ready Diagnostic III Assessment, which will occur in, you know, March or April of 2022 for kindergartners. Last year they had 100%, so they wanted to just maintain that. First grade, they wanted to increase their I-Ready Diagnostic Score by two percentage points. And second grade, they want to maintain it because it was another high rate, 96% of second graders last year had an I-Ready Diagnostic for the third diagnostic of 96% of them were at proficiency. And they wanted to maintain that. For third grade, they wanted to maintain the proficiency rate because it was 98% last year on the I-Ready Diagnostic, Diagnostic Number Three. And ELA proficiency, and this is based on the FSA. They wanted to increase their proficiency from, from last school year to this school year for grade three by four percentage points. And for grade four by six percentage points, grade five by four percentage points. And grade six by seven percentage points, grade seven by four percentage points and grade eight by six percentage points. Generally, the rule of thumb is to make sure that you have an obtainable goal. And so they really don't, unless you know that there was something that really impacted your scores from the previous school year, they really don't recommend you creating goals, you know, like 20, 30% for FSA goals, which is why you see few percentages points in those areas. So they have decided that in order to reach their goal, they're going to use their PLCs, which is Professional Learning Committees, Communities, where teachers get together. They plan together, they look at their data after they take their diagnostic tests. And they decide what they're going to do as a grade level, so they plan together. And they're also going to use that time for professional development. So there are strategies that they are implementing school-wise. And I know they're continuing to work on best standards, professional development. That is done during that time. They're also going to look at their progress monitoring data after each assessment is given and they are going to meet with the teachers. They've partnered with K-12 Lift, like everyone else in the district, to look at that data in a different way that's more meaningful to them. So they'll be using K-12 Lift reports in order to look at that data. They're going to use classroom walkthroughs to make sure that teachers are actually implementing the standards that are given to them and also the lesson plans that are developed when they have Common Planning during the PLC time. The specific standards that they're going to utilize, I'm sorry, not standard, strategy that they're going to utilize is small group instruction during their Bronco time using the Level Literacy Intervention Program. That is a program that was introduced last year at towards the end of the year and many of the teachers thought it was very successful. They used it, I know, in summer school. And a lot of them felt as though it helped the students in the area of ELA. So they are going to use that same program during their small group intervention time. And, you know, that's an, small group instruction is an evidence-based structure, which is why they chose that particular strategy. Oh, let's see. And they will also be working on, it also, that's right, it also allows them to work on reading and the writing piece as well. And that is their area of focus. And as I said, their area of focus, this for ELA was chosen by the state. But it does look as though they are going to also implement a plan for improving their math scores as well, the math proficiency as well, but they're not complete with that at this time.
I had a question, if you will, on, for, for Central. There are students with two or more indicators, early warning indicators. They only had a total of 12. And for school size and with such struggle in third, fourth and fifth grade on the FSA, you would have thought there'd have been more than that. There were actually no students in third, fourth or fifth grade with early warning indicators. And statistically, I just question if that's accurate based on the proficiency in third, fourth and fifth grade on the FSA. The other thing that caught my eye was in the number of students with substantial reading deficiency. Sixth, seventh and eighth grade has zero percent, zero students. There's 152 in first through fifth, but it's funny that it would drop off to zero, sixth, seventh and eighth. I don't know if it's somewhere else or just not there.
I thought we just read somewhere that the fifth and eighth grade didn't meet.
Yeah, I think.
So how come there's, yeah, that's.
And with the early warning system data, I think what happened, it looks like it was just duplicated in the report and maybe they didn't copy it over. If you look at, stroll up.
Uh-huh.
If you stroll up, you'll see the early warning systems. And it says.
They're not carrying over to the next screen.
Yeah, it doesn't look like they carried over for some reason.
But I, I'm not seeing the reading deficiency even, I mean, I'm seeing it in that one.
Okay. So, let me bring you this. So with the students with two or more indicators, they had 182.
Eighty-two.
Yeah.
But down at the bottom, it's just 12 or 13.
Yeah. See, I think it looks like, that 12 looks like it had to have been like a carry down from the suspensions. Do you see what I'm saying? It must have just been an error there because it looks like the suspensions that just carried down.
I, I question some of this too. Like it's this one thing, the 2021, 22, is number of students with a substantial reading deficiency. Well, it says in sixth grade, there's zero. But then again, you have 59 Level One or 50 Level One students. So if they're Level One, they're, there's a problem. But, so I would say that's a reading deficiency.
Well, and if you, I mean, unless they've been remediated from fifth grade to have 62 in fifth grade in your year, you would think that you would have basically statistically between 30 and 50 for the next year in sixth grade. I don't know, maybe it just wasn't like carried over somewhere, but I don't see it anywhere.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was carried over. I think it looks like that second.
So in 19, there wasn't testing?
There was testing.
No, there was. That's what I'm saying. I think they didn't, it looks like they started, if you look at the topics for, I mean, look at the dates for the early warning system, it says 2021 and then it says 202021. And I think they just didn't complete that part for 2021.
On one of them, it says Level One on 2019 ELA Assessment and it has zero across the board. But there's some, the number of students enrolled is filled in. Attendance below 90% is filled in and then one or more suspension is filled in. But course failures in math, ELA, 2019 ELA, Level One on 2019 statewide assessment. There's nothing, there's all zeros.
Yeah. I think what it is, they just, they didn't complete that one, that chart. They completed the first one, which is the current one, looks like it. Because the current one says. Because, um, the current one says, um, two thousand nineteen level one ELA is two hundred and sixty-five. And for math, two thou, two, two nineteen, um, level one assessment is two eighty-eight. So I think they just did not go back and complete that. It looks like they started it, that twenty, twenty twenty twenty-one, but they did not complete that.
So should it all be completed or just the first section?
Yes, it does, but keep in mind, it's a working document, and so, um, it just might be a part that they just haven't gotten to yet. Just like, um, it looks like they were about to start the area of focus for their math. It looks like they're going to target math as an area of focus and do a proficiency goal for their math, but that portion isn't complete either.
Should, should we be voting on this if it's not complete?
That's a question for Ms. Joseph.
We can take it back to them and ask them to complete it and bring it back to the next meeting if you'd like, Nicole, it's incomplete information.
I, I would like to see that.
Okay.
Just all of them are essentials.
I mean, if they're not completed, we, I, I feel, I don't feel good about approving something that's not completed.
Okay.
And maybe they can incorporate the parent involvement in anything that Mr. Del, you know, in other words, whatever we've discussed here.
Okay.
I mean, does this, would this go to DOA not complete or?
Um, so Department of Education, what they do, they post what you have no matter what. And you'll find that in the other school improvement plans, um, a lot of their early warning system data isn't complete either. Um, just because to go back to last year, it takes a lot of time and you have to figure out, I think, how to pull the data and which students. Um, so you'll find other schools that haven't completed that one either. Um, Department of Education posts, but you can always, they know it's a, it's a working document. So, um, you know, it's going to post October, I think, the fifteenth or the eighteenth, no matter what. But you can still go on there and make your edits. And they actually expect you to make changes and to continue it.
I would just feel better if, like, the first section, we already have that posted, that our second section matched the first section. If we already have the data for the first section.
Um, but it might not necessarily match, those are two different years. So like, that first section is like your current year kind of stuff, like where you are right now. And then that second one is previous year.
But shouldn't that information be like at their fingertips for like number of retainees and all that? I mean, or failures in the LA, shouldn't that be?
Um, the, what would be at your fingertips would probably be, um, your FSA data. Um, everything else is not as simple to.
The level ones of ELA and math should be.
Right.
And I just feel funny about putting stuff out there that's not, that we know is like empty. I don't know, am I the only one feeling that way? Is that normal to? Because it's misleading to the public to look at it and.
Let's, let, let us take it back to the schools and put a little bit more information. And that way we can ensure that the corrections get made before we.
I mean, I understand that it's a working document and stuff. I mean, is, is put as you come across it. But like, at Central, saying that you have zero percent in middle school, you have reading problems, that's not accurate. You would think statistically, just looking at the, uh, FSA scores. What did the other board members feel?
I felt like it should be more complete, you know, I mean, looked at again.
Mr. Carroll?
I, um, you know, it's hard for me to approve something of that, that, that's not complete, but, um, I understand that it is a, it's probably like a living document that's, that's, um, ongoing, but the one that's, that's missing is, is the one of the, what, twenty nineteen? Or the one before, right? I mean, that's the ones that's, that's, I mean, probably, I would think they should have been filled out before, before the ones that, of the current year, but, yeah, but.
If, if they have the informa, I wouldn't think they'd have to dig too far to find, find the, the information.
Ms. Williamson?
Yeah, there's not a, excuse me, there's not a deadline to approve this, is there?
Uh, they would like it board approved, but if it's not board approved, they will understand.
Yeah, well, I, I think that, you know, they could.
And the document, the only one that has to be, um, board approved is Mass County High School.
We can, I mean, we can approve the high school.
So they can take it up and put that additional information in there and just bring it back. It's my opinion.
Ms. Bell, how do you feel?
I feel like that we could take it back to the school and get more information, but if, if the Mass County High School is the only one that needs to be approved, can we approve the Mass County High School tonight?
Ms. Joseph said that that can be approved at the next meeting also. We could wait to approve it at the next meeting. I mean, we could approve it if, if, um, if it's the pleasure of the board. If it's the pleasure of the board, give me a motion to approve it.
Are we going to go ahead and look at Lee, Pineda, and Greenville?
Um, well, Pineda's is the same way. Um, they haven't, um, completed that section of the early warning system data that we were just referencing. Um, Lee's is complete and so is Greenville's.
You could do a motion to approve, or you could do a motion to continue it to the next meeting, or to approve some and continue others, you know, but, yeah, I think you need a motion at this point.
Okay, um, what's, whatever is the pleasure of the board, we will.
I don't mind approving the ones that are complete.
I think that we could approve the, um, the high schools tonight. And then we could bring back the Central School and the other schools that hasn't completed theirs.
Who, who else did you say was complete?
Um, Greenville and Lee.
Um, Ms. Thomas is also saying Greenville and Lee's also approved, Ms. Bell.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, the ones that have completed the, um, the, the whole school improvement plan, we can approve those tonight, and then we could have the Central School and the Pineda come back at a later date.
Okay, is there a motion to make the approval?
I, I move to approve the school improvement plans for Greenville Elementary, Lee Elementary, and Madison County High School.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been properly moved by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Ms. Bell. Currently, is there any debate or discussion on the motion? Okay, there's no discussion, we'll proceed to vote on the motion. Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
Um, Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
And I too approve, um, five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of MCHS, um, Greenville Elementary and Lee Elementary. And Pineda and Central will be back to us the next, um, meeting for approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, for. Is she a doctor?
Nope.
I'm sorry. I was thinking you're a doctor.
I will be anybody says that.
I was thinking you are, I'm sorry. Okay, um, gosh, I'm glad I didn't, okay, let's go on. Okay, um, five point seven on instructional continuity plan has been proved, has been pulled. I'm sorry that I didn't say that earlier. Um, that has been pulled tonight, it will, um, proceed at the next meeting. Okay, um, that, that concludes the individual, um, items. Um, other items of interest to the board, um, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have given you at least two items at your desktop. And one thing, uh, we need to be mindful of our student enrollment and the multi-color sheet with, uh, different lines on it. I just wanted you to know where our enrollment is as of right now. And if you would look at the circle numbers, you will see our, as of today, these are our present enrollment. Now, your last two columns, the very last column, which says survey two, twenty twenty-one, that was during October of last year, and that was COVID time, so your numbers are down there. And then second survey, we had a lot of kids come back, and so those numbers did increase. Now, in your last two numbers, when you do surveys, you do about half of the students. So if you want to actually compare these numbers to the numbers that circle, you would take those last two, last number, and you would double them, and then you would be actually comparing them. But for the audience, um, know where our enrollment is at the high school.
Yeah. At, these are, the high school is the first one, right?
Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm telling you, double oh, one, one is the high school. Okay, as of today, they have four hundred fifty-nine point ninety-eight students, and that's the number that's circled. Okay? The second school, oh, double oh, forty-one, that's Central. They have nine hundred twenty-three, uh, point fifty-four students. Okay, and the next one, double oh, one, nine, one, that's Greenville Elementary, they have ninety-six point five students. The next one, um, one oh, one, that's Lee Elementary, that's a hundred seventy-five students. Okay, the next one, one one one, is, um, that's Pineda Elementary. And the last two, one twenty-two is Creative Arts, and one twenty-one is James Madison. And if you look down below, because uh, homeschool does not break out how they fund students. Homeschool, we have two hundred forty-seven students in homeschool. Remember, we do not get a penny for those children. Okay, in my district, virtual school, that's as opposed to Florida Virtual School. Because Florida Virtual School get their own FTE. We get, uh, FTE for these students, but we have to pay someone to do the virtual instruction. We have twenty-four in that school. Family empowerment, and a lot has been through the legislators about that. We've got thirteen students. Right now, that fund comes in our budget, but the state is in the process of taking that money away from us. That family empowerment. And so.
Is it online or?
What?
The family empowerment?
No, uh, that's where, uh, a student can get their funds, their FTE, and take it to another school.
Take it to another.
That's what that is.
So they're thinking about taking it?
Okay, rather than running it through your district's, uh, budget, they're just going to take it and give it directly to whoever that is on, yes.
So they're going to another school in another county then?
Uh, it might be a private school. Probably a private, most of the time it's private school. But that's, and, and I will periodically let you know where our enrollment is because we're coming upon FTE, which is next week.
So, um, Ms. Joseph, I want to clarify. I said to add the, um, survey, um, three and survey two together to.
No, I didn't say that, I said double it, double either one of them, and you'll see.
Okay, and then you would get how far off you are from this one?
Yes, okay, um, for example, at the high school, on survey two, in the blue column, you had two thirty-four point six or seven, and you double that, that's going to be four six, about four sixty-nine, rounded. Okay, that's, um, they, that shouldn't be that far off. Okay, on survey three, we have two thirty-seven point fifty-six and double that. That'll be two seventy, approximately two seventy-five. Now, when we were doing virtual school, uh, distance learning school, all those kids were still enrolled at the high school, so we should not see much fluctuation at the high school. But if you go down to, um, oop.
Central.
Central won't be, uh, Central will probably be up.
No, well, it's, it's around, um, based upon, it's around twenty below, I think.
Okay. Oh, one oh, one.
Lee is up, Lee is up.
That's Lee, okay. In survey twos, they had seventy-four and seventy-five, that's about a hundred and fifty. But then in, uh, survey three, it went eighty-one, eighty-sixteen, that's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and sixty kids, a hundred and sixty-two kids. And so you, you see it because, uh, if they were K through five, they may have been assigned to the Central School if they were doing distance learning. Okay, another thing I want you to be aware of, I sent out a, an email district-wide last week, and also we put this notice on Facebook as well as the, as the district webpage. We've been having some issues with students doing something called TikTok Challenge. I really can't explain that, but we, we, we are on top of it. And we, we've told the kids and told the parents, we have student code of conduct. We will be enforcing that. These things, as, we are about keeping our kids safe and providing a quality education. And all this stuff that distracts from doing that, we will be on top of it. We will not tolerate it. We want our kids safe, we want to provide a quality education, and throwing bottles and, and destruction of property will not be tolerated. And so if someone called you about that, we have told them, these TikTok challenges, we do not need that. That's, school is not an appropriate place for that. That's it, Mr. Chairperson.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you, Superintendent Attorney Adams, Ms. Reeves.
No, sir, unless you have questions, I'm ready.
Okay, Board Member Adams, Mr. Carroll?
Um, I just, I, is it, is it a policy at athletic events that we, if you leave, you got to pay to get back in? Is that, is that anywhere in the, in the thing? Is that a policy? Is that a, a rule or what?
Let us look at the policy.
I think it ought to be if it's not, because it's a safety issue. Because everywhere I've been, it, it has been that way. Just because people going out to the truck, sipping a little, getting back in. Going out to the truck, you, you know, you don't ever know what they're going to do to get, to, to get on. You don't ever know, but, I mean, that's why we're, we're all, I've been there, that director, that's the way I guess it's been.
Uh, Mr. Carroll, that's not a policy, that's something that the high schools put in place for that same reason you just mentioned to curtail people going to their truck, getting alcohol, and getting other unnecessary, uh, illegal devices. That was the reason that rule was put in during that. But during that time, they also put in, um, if an administrator escorted a person to their vehicle, okay, that was okay, because we understand people make mistakes and leave things in their vehicle. But if they had an administrator, uh, escort the person to the vehicle, that was fine.
Well, I think, I think what needs to be done then is it needs to be, that needs to be maybe announced at the game?
Or, or big signs.
Or a big sign at the game.
Well, we, we have signs on the, there are, there are permanent signs on the visitor's side. And I think there used to be permanent signs, signs on the hall.
They said no re-entry, it did.
Yeah, and, but, they, they've made some. In the policy, on Mr. Carroll, it's, um, policy nine one six oh, public attendance at school events, oops, um, said, um, it didn't specifically say about that. It said if a student or adult is asked to leave or is removed from a school event, no admission fees shall be refunded. No alcohol beverages or other controlled substance may be possessed, consumed, or distributed at any function sponsored by the district or on board property. Um, it doesn't say, um, specifically what you're asking, no, it does, we don't, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not here, I'm saying. I'm saying that it's not in the, in the section that I'm looking at.
Well, it may, it may not be a policy.
Concerning athletic events, there's a section on emergency authorization, weapons, um, recording of IEP team meetings, interspersed activities, anti-harassment, anti-harassment, student hazing, non-discrimination of equal employment opportunities. I would just have to like look through here more to try to find it if it is.
Well, if it's not, and I, I'm not saying that we have to have a policy at the board. I'm, I, I mean, if it's a rule at the high school and if it's a, if it's, if the high school has a rule or the middle school, I think it needs to be, uh, uh, I think it needs to be system wide, not just one school or the other. But if, if it has that, a administrator can escort somebody out, then it needs to say that up there on a sign, like he said, or they need to know it. Uh, you know, we got people that volunteer out there, they don't know nobody. They don't know folks. So, you know, and they going by the rules and trying to go by the rules that they've been given. So, uh, I just think that.
That's a hard job, I mean.
Oh, I wouldn't do it for nobody.
Years ago, I sold programs and I got stuck there, like having to, people coming in and out. And when you have a big game, it's a lot of, it's a lot of, lot of tension and hard, I mean, it's just a hard task. But Ms. Reeves, do you, do you recommend that we have like a policy where it says that? Cause so it's clear across the board?
Um, I, I think it's certainly within your discretion to do that. I don't think you have to do that. I think you can leave it to the, uh, to the principal, um, to make those decisions. Because I, I would imagine there are some sporting events where it's not that big of a deal and you, there, there's not that much attendance. And so you really don't need to monitor it. There are some that it is. The, the, I, I think the big thing is that whatever you're gonna do, you need to have some rules posted that everybody can see as they walk in. The other thing is you gotta kind of keep in mind too, where the, the rule, as I understand it, it's not that you can't leave and come back. It's you got to pay when you come back.
That's right.
So if, if you're willing to pay, you can go out and sit up and do whatever you want and just come back and forth a couple of times. So it, really what you're talking about is whether or not they have to pay again. And, and I think that's the way you need to write it in the rule is that there's no, that, it, it's not that there's no reentry. It's not that if you leave, you can never come back. It's if you come back, you got to pay that fee. So I think that's where it, you know, we need to say something like that.
Should the board get involved in that when the board doesn't control how they spend the funds? Because they take out the receipts. And so it should be the board, and I'm asking this question. Should the board be making a policy of it when we have no control on how they spend their funds?
Do you ask me that?
I don't know.
Um, yes, I think the board can certainly do that. Uh, the board can decide whether or not these organizations are allowed to collect the fees. The board can, can say there's not going to be a fee charge. The board could say, charge a fee.
If we're having to decide on us voting on parking, then I would think we would have to decide on this.
Those are the board's facilities. So you all can decide whether there's to be a fee and how's it to be run now. But, but understand what I'm saying. I'm not saying you have to have a policy.
Right.
I'm saying that's within your discretion.
So what, what I'm saying, whatever we need to do needs to be done at Central and the high school.
And, and what you may decide to do is you may decide, well, that's more appropriately, that decision more appropriately made by the principal. But principal, whatever you decide now, put up a big sign so everybody knows.
And, and they need to be on the same page at Central and the high school where when in eighth grade, you're at Central doing this and you come to the high school. It's something completely different. It needs to be exactly mirror image of what's done at one school is done at the other. And.
There must be some rules now, because that's what they're doing. So there, there's been some.
They, they have a rule, they have a rule.
So I mean, I think it's just a matter of, you know, doing it, I guess.
It's not posted so that everybody knows.
Well, post it definitely.
Well, it is posted. It's, it's not about the administrator going. That's what I think is the issue.
Yeah.
Uh, they call administrators all the time. And I was out there Friday night, they call administrator at a gate to, uh, give another child permission to go in and out the gate, okay? It's just some, some people choose to call the administrators to come verify. And some people choose not to.
There, there again, there again, if it's on a sign out there, even a, even a new person that's working the game will know what it is. You know, they may not talk, you know, I, I mean, you know, but people that's volunteering and working the game and, 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 you know, they just, they need to, they need to know. They need to know.
The, the other thing though, like.
They call the administrators.
Well, the, the other thing though, you're talking about with the administrators, do, do we make sure that we have administrators available with each other?
They are available, okay?
Well, yeah, we haven't administrators there, but if you have a, if you have a busy game.
The administrators are still available.
Yeah.
Okay, and the school resources officer standing right next to the gate or near the gate. Not necessarily resource officer, but the sheriff, deputy sheriff is there.
I, I just had a question about if you're going to, as far as the reentering and repaying. Now, if they leave the campus completely and come back, are they gonna have to repay?
I would think that would be repaying.
If they leave out.
Now, if they come in, let's say they come in halfway through the game, oh, I gotta run out to the car and get something. It's, I mean, it's right there.
But, but, but.
But one of us or one of the administrators can walk to the car. That don't mean they're gonna have to repay to come back in, correct?
Not if, not if that's a rule with the, if the administrator's with them.
Right.
But if they go out there by themselves and come back in, they're gonna have to pay.
Completely and then leave the campus.
If they, I would think if they pull their car through the gate and get on ninety or down to exit the, the facilities, then you're gonna pay to get back in.
Regardless of.
Because administrator wouldn't be in their car with them, hopefully.
But if they, if they at that stadium and they walk, wanna walk out by themselves and go to their car and come back in, they're gonna have to pay.
Right, because you know.
It's, it's a safety issue.
But if you take an administrator with you.
And, and, and here's another thing. I mean, I know some people and, I mean, you probably know, I mean, you know that, but what's, what's fair for one, it's fair for all of them.
Right.
That's just the way I feel. Now, if it's a rule though, but we need to have a sign out there.
Need to have a sign.
You can be escorted with a administrator to your car and not have to pay. It ought to be, because it's not fair to those folks out there that's selling them tickets, that's getting, because most people, when they come through there and they pay their, uh, whatever they pay, eight dollars, ten dollars, I paid ten dollars. But anyway, when they pay, when they pay to come in, then they think they can do what they want to with it.
Well, well, it's not. If you were to go to any other stadium here in the state of Florida, it's gonna be on their sign that if you leave the, if you leave the stadium, you're gonna pay to reenter.
That's right.
So we're not doing something new. It's just that we, we need to be consistent across the board in what we do.
And, and I think that if they, we sit with that rule, they won't want to pay too many times. Or they'll remember to bring their stuff. You know, in other words, I forgot, you will be start, it's part of being responsible. This is what we're trying to teach kids.
Right.
So this thing about the administrators running back and forth, I don't know. That might get to be a hassle, I mean.
Well, then that's up to the administrator. They don't want, you know, they don't, if they don't come do it.
The administrator, if they have a valid reason to go.
If it's a habitual, if it's a habitual act, then that, I think that's up to the administrator to say, you know what, we've gone out to the car enough tonight. I mean, I can't see them.
I have, I have never been at a gate and seen the same person go to their car before the once.
Well, it generally don't happen. It generally don't happen.
Generally, it don't happen, but you don't have.
But you got that one time it do happen. If you don't, and, and if somebody, uh, you then that one time.
We, we need to be like looking ahead of what could happen. And, and again, ultimately, it's not fair to the people volunteering their time at the gate or, or the administrator on duty. And I know that things happen and people forget things. And you may have children and forget something in the car for the child or medicine or who knows what. But again, we just need something documented where everybody going in that arena can see, these are the rules.
Well, and how, I mean, if you're talking about a football game, how late into the football game do you even have those gates manned? I mean, after, once you get to about the fourth quarter.
Well, I think, I think, I think the, uh, I think the officers, they, uh, I mean, I think though, they, they, it's through the third quarter, I know, but they take up much.
In the past, like the beginning of the fourth quarter, we stopped selling tickets, I think.
It's right at the end of the third quarter, begin of the fourth quarter.
Yeah.
They, they quit selling tickets and start counting money.
But I mean, the gates are open at that point is my point. I mean, people come in.
But you still got an officer standing there.
That, that's, uh.
Well, yeah, but, but my point is if somebody's trying to leave and come back, you're, you're the, after the third quarter, they're, they freely do that, don't they? I mean, yeah, an officer standing there, but he's not saying no, we can't come back.
Well, that was, that was an issue, you know, with us. And I'm just saying us up yonder, because we had to change because of the times. Once that, that gate stopped, then we had law enforcement at every gate and they didn't let nobody in that was outside after the third quarter. They didn't come in.
And I could see that for safety reasons.
Yes, that's why we done.
Well, and, and that's not a bad policy.
Because you got people, uh, you know, up yonder, people sitting in the car till the third quarter and come try to get in. But you don't know, they, they been out there drinking the whole time, them, them, you know.
Well, and, and again, it, it's fine to do it that way. Just whatever we're gonna do needs to be written on the sign.
That's right.
If we're saying no admittance after the beginning of the fourth quarter or whatever, you know, that just brighten up.
It just, it just helps our people that's volunteering to know what, you know, even though that's their first time there and they may not know all the rules, they can read them.
Even the ones that are there all the time still don't know the rules.
Right.
Well, it helps spectators. If somebody's telling them something wrong, but they, they can say, well, look at the sign, it says.
I just think that we can.
Well, so, so we have a home game this Friday night and I think that there needs to be posted signs on the entrance ways where people can see and it's very clear to everybody what's what with it. So there's no confusion concerning it.
I think it boils down to either the principal making the decision or else.
The principal and athletic director should.
Should get together.
Athletic director can coordinate the different sports and the different schools to make sure they're all getting that same information.
Well, you know, I, I think that, and basketball is the world's worst.
Yeah, basketball and football are your two that would. And maybe even baseball, I mean, they have, they pay to get in baseball and softball and.
Well, they, they, it needs to be that way too.
Yeah, they, they all, I mean, probably.
If you do one sport, you have to do all of them.
Yep, all of them need to be done. I don't know, do we charge for tennis?
Ten thousand dollars on the gate, who's gonna buy the signs? Are we gonna buy the signs and they gonna buy the signs?
Well, I would think that.
Because I'm gonna get that question, who's gonna buy the signs?
I would think a sign like that would be hardware at the stadium that'd probably come on the school district. But I think that, that's a decision, again, that y'all would make. Um, I don't even do it either way. Uh, what, one of the problems though, I mean, we're in the middle of the season. If you try to charge the booster club or whoever now, I mean, they've already gotten.
Well.
I think, I think that's a responsibility of the district personally. That's what I think, because it's on the.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do you think that we could place this information on the website? Um, and on state, the district we, on Facebook? And send out a letter that'll save some money for right now? Um, until we could get it together for the following year, for the next year?
If you help me with the wording, because, um, we usually try to let the schools take care of their after letters and they usually go to the school sites. But if you help me with the wording, we can put it on the webpage.
Um, yes, ma'am, I, I think that'd be the easiest way to do it. And I think the decision should be made by the principal.
It should be on the school.
Start to make a policy for it.
But, but we're still gonna need something up on Friday night as Swanee County rolls in there.
Listen, there ain't nobody looking at no website.
Yeah, we.
That cat sits out there.
Ms. Ms.
Facebook is a, Facebook is a, is a good tool to news. They are looking at Facebook and that's the way you could get around. If you get information also out in a letter, um, you can inform the students and they can inform their parents when they get to the game. We're too late in the season to try to pay or get money, like you say, from the booster club in order to pay for a sign. So we gotta make a new way or find a new way to get the information out. So if we get it on the Facebook page, the district Facebook page, the athletic Facebook page, also on the website and get a letter out with the kids, they, there's no way that nobody would not know what's going on at that game.
This money that you get for gate receipts go into athletic account at the school. It does not go to the booster club.
That's right. That's, that's Madison County, uh, football stadium, not Madison County Booster Fu- Football Stadium.
It'd be nice to have a big sign, but.
It don't take.
The, where you buy the ticket, you could, for temporarily.
Have a sign.
You could have it on a, boldly, on a piece of paper, laminated, where they buy the ticket and say it.
They have, I'm sure we have board maker in the district where we can make posters that would have a sign that can be.
And that will get us through this season and maybe do something.
I'll call somebody tomorrow and see if they can make me a, a little sign up banner, like the one we put up here.
Got to get with.
I'll, I'll pay for it.
With the principal and, and see exactly what, what they want to do.
What the rules.
And then get the sign up there. And then they have to sign up to volunteer, just everybody can't come volunteer.
No, it's, they, the organization's.
I think it's, I think it's FF, FF eight sells the tickets. And they're, they're the parents, the parents of them.
But we know who they are, so you give them a sheet, this is the rule we're gonna be going by.
But, but.
Um, is the rule, is the rule, if you leave the game for any reason, to reenter the game, you have to pay and that's for everybody?
No, you can be escorted by, out by a, an administrator.
What about a resource officer?
A resource officer.
Escort people out to the car if they have to go?
I've seen resource officers escort people out. Administrator or resource officer, they let them escort them out and back, and back in.
But, but the issue, Ms. Vale, was that wasn't clear with, with everyone. So that's, that's where the, that's where the issue's been sort of.
Usually goes to an administrator or a resource officer, they have a real reason to go to the car. They're not just, they're not gonna go out there to do, to get happy.
Every time that I've been working at the ticket gate and they've asked me to go to the vehicle is for a legitimate reason, whether it be medication for their young'un, a diaper, whatever. If it's a legit reason, I don't mind this, but we'll go to the car and we'll come back. But if you're going out there for.
To smoke.
God knows what else.
They're not gonna ask you to go with them if they're going out there to do that.
They may. So, so, um, we're in agreement that we do need a sign Friday night of some sort.
You, you might want to take a motion second.
Okay, um, okay, with, with that being said, um, I'm going to, would I need to amend the agenda?
Yes, sir, please, sir. If, if you're gonna discuss this, not discuss it, if you're gonna take action.
Vote. I'm gonna amend the agenda to include a five point, um, the instructional continuity plan was pulled, so five point seven.
That's the wrong one I'm looking at, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one.
Could I, could I do it five point seven since that plan's been pulled? Okay, um, it's gonna be five point seven and we're, um, um, we need a motion on, um, constructing a sign to, um,
I think you.
Or, or have the high school.
The, the first issue is whose responsibility is it to come up with the rule? So, and I think y'all were talking about it was the principal's responsibility to come up with the rule. And then the second part of it is the principal needs to make, whatever rule they come up with, needs to be plainly put on a sign that's, uh, visible by, uh.
What, what, I think the principal needs to go through the athletic director, because you're gonna have two principals. Because you got Central School too and stuff.
Well, the AD should be in conversation with the principal.
And then the athletic director dictates what the two principals want, um.
Well, I was about to say.
You have two.
You have two athletic directors.
Oh, okay.
We need to change that too.
Athletic directors.
We need, we need.
The principal and athletic director.
We need a county athletic director.
The union does that, we don't do that.
Well, you need to go with them.
Well, they could get together.
I'm not bothering the union.
They could get together, I mean, they're friends.
I don't even think the one that's, that, that over there is over there.
And make sure that, you know, because hopefully we have time to get some things for some of the other sports. If not, this paper sign, that where you buy the ticket is not this huge place. I mean, it's a, a booth.
So, um, we've decided that the principal needs to come up with, with what's gonna be on the sign, who's going to be able to leave, with whom they're leaving with. And the athletic director needs to be in the conversation where it's consistent in both schools.
That's right.
Is there a motion to, um, is there someone to make the motion? Is there a motion to, um, is there someone to make the motion?
I'm at.
Say it.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, but go ahead.
Whoever, someone.
I move it, I move it, what, what you said there.
Uh, your, your motion is to.
Is to.
Have.
Have the principal, in conjunction with the athletic director, have the rule for entering and reentering a game on Fri- on, uh, at, at.
Athletic events.
At athletic events.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Um, is there any further discussion on this motion?
Do we need to say athletic events? Do we need to?
I still think that it should be placed on, um, the athletic website for the schools and on our district page, because a lot of people be walking into the game, they don't look at the signs at the gate. And it's important to have it at the game, but if we put it out there like that, I think a lot of more people will get the information.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that, I, I'll put that in my motion too, is to have the principal put it on the school website.
And do we need to say athletic events? If the band has a concert, you don't want people leaving in the middle of that and coming back in.
If they have to pay.
Right.
They're having to pay.
Don't, they don't have anything like that where they pay?
So, you're gonna have this for all, for all paid events?
It's donations. I mean, the band events are like donations.
They'll just cover, they'll just make a blanket statement, if it's paid events. But that's their motion.
Is that, Mr. Carroll, are you, are you, in your motion, or is it just for athletics or all paid events?
I'd say, I'd say all paid events.
All paid events, okay.
Title no, let's be equitable.
Okay, it's been properly moved by, um, Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Gibson. If there's no more discussion, of, and all those in favor of Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
Um, Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
Ms. Williamson?
Appreciate.
Okay, five oh, um, Ms. Bishop, for approval for the principal to come up with, um, the rules concerning leaving all paid events within the high school in conjunction with athletic director, and signs be posted on the gate and be placed on social media, making the public aware of, um, the changes. Or, or what we're doing, not necessarily the changes, the, what the rules are. Cause I don't really know that there's much changes, but just what the rules are.
No, if I just what the rules were.
Where, where it's clear to everyone, and there's no surprises for our volunteers or for anyone there at the gate. Okay, Mr. Carroll, anything else?
Nope.
Ms. Gibson?
I think I've said it all tonight.
Uh, Ms. Wi- uh, Ms. Bell, I'm sorry.
No, sir, I have nothing else to say.
Um, Ms. Williamson, um, I would like to say that we rode in the parade, um, last Friday. It was a nice parade, real nice weather, nice homecoming. Um, I attended, um, a conference in Orlando on policy and bargaining, September the 23rd through the 24th, through the Florida School Board Association. I want to thank, um, personally, um, Mr. Jay Hicks and Sandy Dorsey, who has been working with the band. We've, we haven't had a band director, and they have, um, really saved us. And, um, I do really appreciate them and what they've done. They're such nice people, and the kids are lucky to have them. And the first show on the field, they did well, um, to not have had band camp, they really did remarkably well. And I think we're just very lucky to have had them and for them to have kept the program going, which it easily could have like gone under not having someone here. So, I just really do appreciate them and all they have done, um, this season. And hopefully, our new band director will be coming soon, we're keeping our fingers crossed. I would like to, um, say a special condolences to the Ms. Loretta Franklin's family. She's a former teacher here in the district who just passed away. She taught at several schools here in the district. I remember working with her at the primary school and even at Central, I think. And I just wanna, um, remember their family in this time. And that's all I have tonight, and I wish, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, all those in favor of Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
And Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
And I too approve, five oh, Ms. Bishop, for adjournment.